Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 12th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. We have our dog from the kennel this morning.
Good morning, this is kennel number seven. He was surrendered to us yesterday. The owner could not keep him anymore because of his living circumstances, but he's ready for adoption now. He went through the prison program.
Seven months old.
He's got a lot of energy.
He's ready today.
All right.
We have fifteen other dogs in the kennel. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Lundie has our word for the day?
Yeah, our inspirational word for the day, be devoted to each other like a loving family, excel in showing respect for each other.
Good. Do we want to do our presentations first or just? Okay, let's do our presentations first so everybody can get back to work.
Okay, Brandy Chanel, solid waste, photograph, caption contest winners.
Is everybody here that's coming?
They are.
Okay, good.
They're all here.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Brandy.
Morning.
My name is Brandy Chanel. I am from the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District and we held the photograph and caption contest at the end, the very end of the year last year. And so today we have our four winners with us. Commissioner Sveda and Commissioner Kowski helped judge this contest and there were some great entries, but we think these four are exceptional. So I have a PowerPoint that actually will be able to show the winners, the pictures, and we have a $25 gift card and a certificate signed by all of the Commissioners to give to these students. And at the very back of the room, we have the posters that were made out of those photographs. The school will get one to display, the students will get one, and then we will also have one. And so I will go ahead and pull up the pictures and have the students come up when we show their picture on the screen. Did you want to come down and present the certificates?
Do you want to do that after?
Okay, we'll show the photos first and then we'll let the parents take the pictures that I know they want to take.
Okay.
Their kids. The first of our four winners is Lauren Phillips from South Amherst Middle School. She's an eighth grader and the caption for this photograph is recycle the present, save the future.
Very nice.
The next winner is Clara Kilgore, St. Peter's School, North Ridgeville, 7th grade. Her caption is recycling every day keeps the landfill away. Jacob McIver from St. Jude's School in Illyria, 6th grader, caption reused to make something cool. And Francesca Jelovich, St. Peter's School, North Ridgeville, 7th grade, caption, our life will be pretty rough if we don't recycle now.
Yay.
And the clear winner of this contest is Fritz here, the puppy. So they did a.
Fritz here today?
No. If they would have known that he could come, I bet you they would have brought him. So I just want to thank you for being such big supporters of our contests and we'll have them come up and receive their certificates and their gift cards.
Lauren Phillips.
Hi. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Jacob McIver?
McIver.
Oh. Hi there. Thank you for participating. Congratulations. There you go. Congratulations. Francesca Jelovich?
Hi. Fritz is yours?
Yes.
Congratulations.
You know, if you have a dog, you're going to get it. You're going to get selective. We're dog lovers up here and you can't tell. Clara Kilgore?
Hey, it's got magic.
Are they in school together?
They are, yes.
Oh, goodness. Nice job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and, no, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, these kids have to get back to school, so they're going to go ahead and skedaddle, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
It's always so difficult to select. We get stacks of them.
This isn't quite as hard as the calendar contest because there's not as many entrants, entries, but it's still difficult because they take the time and.
Morning Commissioners, we're all here.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Yep, I got the vehicle maintenance coordinator with me, Grant Coban Nelson. Obviously, we're up here to request eight vehicles for the sheriff's office. Obviously, we need cars, you know that. Now, I always say, these are the officer's office. I mean, you know, you probably don't know it and maybe you have heard though, we actually in December, with the start of the new schedule, went to 12-hour shifts. We used to have three eights, now we've got two twelves. What we're trying to do is control some of the overtime. I'm hoping, this is a pilot program, we'll see how it works out at the end of the year, whether we're going to stay with it, but I just wanted to let you know that, that we're doing that right now. And obviously, you know that the sheriff's office, we never close, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, that we're always operating something either in the jail or something out in the road patrol. And I know the Commissioner Lundie, I talked to him briefly this morning, he mentions North Ridgeville, you know, I'm going to mention him too. They just got five new cars. I don't know if they leased them, but it was in the paper, there was an article. They have 25 square miles they patrol. We actually have 495 in Lorraine County because we're always in the cities. My sexual offender officers are always in Lorraine, Illyria. You've got the warrant guys always in town, the civil office always in town, so they put a lot of miles on the vehicles too. And I did want to bring one thing up because the total cost, as you'll see here when Grant goes through the slides, I'm not sure if we're still going to do it this year, but the mobile data terminals that we put into cars in service, those are always bought with 911 money. I'm not sure if we're going to still do that, but you are our communication center. You might be dispatching for other areas, but you are our total communications for everything. As you know, we've done that several years ago to try to save funding, which has worked out pretty well. We ironed a lot of bugs out of it. Tracy and Russ and Mike doing a good job over there, so we're trying to work through that. But I'll go ahead and let Grant go through the PowerPoint demonstration and then whatever questions you may have, we'll try to answer.
Great. Okay. Morning.
Morning Commissioners. I'm always a little bit nervous, you know, I'm getting better every year.
You do a good job every time.
I'm getting better every year, I think. Again, the sheriff covered on some fine points. As you can see, our main picture is two of the main vehicles we have now, Chevy Tahoe and the Ford Police Utility Interceptor. Those are both our newer vehicles that we have. We touched on a point that Lorraine County, like even the sheriff has said, is 491 square miles. Our fleet travels, on average, and when I say our fleet, I'm talking just our road patrol cars, not our court transport vans, 84,000 miles a month. We've talked in the past, 84,000 miles, circle on earth almost two times in a month. This captain come up with it equates to each mile being covered 171 times a month of the county, just by our road patrol fleet. So again, that's like the sheriff said, the cities have smaller square miles. Illyria's 20, 23 square miles and we've got 40. So we have a lot of distance to cover and if a deputy's in Columbia Township and gets a backup call in Rochester, that's 25 miles he's got to go right now, so they do put some miles on. That's a couple quick maintenance facts I kind of threw in there. 146, that equals the number of oil changes they performed last year. 114 is the number of tires mowing and balancing the cars, and 1,020 is the quarts of oil we used to keep the fleet up and running. We did go to, in 2012, full synthetic well because auto manufacturers require it now. We buy the oil in bulk, so we do get it a lot cheaper. But it's a lot of equipment and stuff needed just to even maintain the fleet that we have.
One thing I want to add, he's the chief cook and bottle washer too. He's a one-man show. He does all our cars and he does a fantastic job.
Wow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of service.
Yeah. And we touched on the support car program. The car's average service life is eight years. We try and get five years out of it as a support car. That is a car that the deputy takes home, then he supports the sheriff's office by being in service the minute he leaves home. So if we have a call and ready and go, he can go right to there instead of reporting nonstation. Then they take care of the car a little better, the cars last longer being in the rust belt, they wash them, the bodies and stuff last longer for us. So we get about five years of the support car, then we put it in fleet and usually it lasts about three years in fleet.
Did we, anybody ask us, is there any road deputies that live outside of the county?
We have one, but it's a K-9 unit and he's, because he's a K-9 unit and he's only like two or three miles out of the county. If you're out of the county, you cannot take a support car home, it stays on station.
Would you differentiate the support versus fleet use?
Support, like I say, it's a car assigned to one deputy only. He's allowed to take that vehicle home. A fleet car is, we have about 10 or 11 of them, they stay on station, okay? So the younger deputies that don't have the time in yet, they rotate through those cars and say if a support car is down for service, then he can grab a fleet car. The fleet cars are on station all time for whatever use in house. There's even times when auxiliaries had to kind of grab a fleet car if they've had a big situation going on for traffic, but there are extra cars that are used for, like a pool car type deal.
And also, we make them have at least five years on as a deputy before we even entertain the fact that they possibly could get a support car if we have one available.
And as we talked about in the support car, we've gained over 185 hours of patrol time and responded to over 578 calls of service while deputies were reporting on or off duty. So again, that's just driving to work.
19 in 2019?
Yeah. That's, yeah.
Wow.
So stopping for cars that are broke down on the highway or a lot of times even they'll get called to go relieve someone at the hospital or something like that. Again, it provides a fleet safety and quicker response emergency times. Another thing with the support cars providing safety, if you have a bad storm and all the cars are parked on station, I think it was 2010 or 11, we had a hailstorm and we had 30 cars and it got damaged from the sheriff's office. Now, if we had all the cars there, then they'd all, but you know, with them all spread out across the county, you have a big emergency, that way our entire fleet wouldn't get wiped out in one situation like that.
One tornado could wipe an entire fleet out.
Yeah. Replacement guidelines, we've talked about this before, it's just a chart that we add numbers. We can go in and every year, like this year, we went 2015 and older. It allows me to assign a number to a car that we can determine its.
Longevity?
Yes, longevity, if it needs to be replaced or not. Like I say, the first one, first number is age, so if the car is five years old, it gets five points. The next one is miles, if it's got 111,000, it's 11 points added. And then we go to type of service. If it's a detective car, it gets a one point, but if it's a police car, automatically it's five points. Then the next one is reliability, how often has a car been in the shop? Generally, ours are just one. That's not including maintenance, it's just if the car's broke down, you had to go get it. Next one is maintenance repair cost. Again, cars are, maintenance is pretty low nowadays because we keep up on them. And then the third one is condition. A lot of the older cars kind of fall into two and three just because of age and things and stuff like that. So that allows us to assign a number to the cars and you get to the point where we have, as you can see, zero to 17 is excellent, 18 to 22 is good, 23 to 30, 27 is qualified replacement and 28 and up is poor. I have that right here.
I think I've been around too long. I remember back, didn't we used to have to use, take like stop signs and put them for the floorboards? Now, this was a long time ago. I've been here.
No, it's all right, police, we had those.
I've done that when we were at the county garage for a while there, we would take their old street signs. We had, at one point in time, we had a car that had no mechanics or mechanic area only, so it was up on a lift, it was, but yes.
The stop sign?
It's gotten, it's gotten better. The cars don't rust out near as much as they used to. So the current fleet condition of 2016 and older, we have zero cars that are in the accident condition. We have four that are 18 to 22 in good condition. We have five that are 23 to 27 and satisfactory. Eight cars that are 20 plus and poor. But of those eight cars, we have 20 plus or poor. Again, we have two Tahos that fall into that category and I reevaluated them, they'll work for us for another year or so. Age and mileage has gotten, but the Tahoe's a bigger, you know, bigger component, so they're, they're a little more robust for us and they're holding up well. Continuing, replacement guidelines by mileage. Again, we've talked about national average is about 100,000 miles for a car. Michigan State Police is 70,000 and we're trying to take ours to 160, which we generally do pretty well at. Current fleet mileage of 65 law enforcement cars, again, these are just the cars that are on our road patrol fleet. We have two cars that are at 160,000 plus right now, four cars at 130,000 plus, nine cars at 100,000 plus, 11 cars at 70,000 plus, 13 at 35,000 and up, and then 26, 35,000 and under. Vehicles replaced in last year, 2019, we replaced eight vehicles total, one 2003 Ford Crown Victoria, one 2008 Ford Crown Victoria, one 2010 Crown Victoria, three 2011 Crown Victorias, one 2013 Caprice, and one 2008 Chevy Impala.
Do we have any cars left in the fleet?
Cars?
Yeah, instead of SUVs?
Oh, we still have the Caprices, Crown Vics were.
They're gone?
Were done with Crown Vics, yeah. We have one in auxiliary, but it's probably not going to be much longer, but we don't have any more Crown Vics on the road. And then we have nine vehicles that we would like to replace for this year. Again, one 2011 Tahoe, one 2012 Tahoe, two 2013 Chevy Caprices, three 2014 Caprices, and two 2015 Caprices, one which is a K-9, they rack up hours on the engine, that kills them more than anything. And the other one was, it was lost in a total loss in a.
Do they have to leave them on for the dogs so they don't get overheated?
Yes, yeah, so for every mile, for every hour of idling, it equals 33 miles of driving. So those cars rack up the engine and, you know, parts like that rack up miles quicker.
Good to know.
Replacement vehicle options, we're going to have to remove the Tahoe from this. When we made this, the Tahoe was still in play. When Chevrolet, GM manufactures, they went on strike, okay? The Tahoe is now being redesigned like the Ford was last year and we got an email last week that because of the strike, what the dealers were doing, they were preordering Tahos that probably put in stock for state contract, they basically got canceled. They couldn't supply those orders, so the Tahoe option's pretty much out. But as you can see, the Ford utility, the base utility is 38,350. State contract bid has come out now, that price is down to 38,000, no, the base price is 31,000, I don't have with me. The 38,350 is priced outfitted with lights, sirens, cages, and then as you can see, down at the bottom, the price of 47,000 is camera and what we talked about with the MDT system and everything installed as well.
Why is the maintenance so much higher on the Fords than on the Tahos?
That was estimated, and that was actually for the older ones. The older ones had a lot of issues with water pumps. I don't have figures on, I should have removed that, sorry. I don't have figures on the new ones because basically the new ones are a complete redesign.
Okay, so that could go down?
Yeah, scratch that, yeah, that could go down. And then reliability, again, we don't have a whole lot on.
That may be different too?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then this is what we talked about in the updated MDT. As you can see, the picture on the left is the newer CF-55 Panasonic tablet, it's a lot smaller, it allows the actual side view mirror to be seen.
I was going to say, that other one really structured view.
The picture on the right is.
Carry your laptop.
Yeah, it's laptop, the CF-31. And in a Tahoe, we can make that work and these newer utilities and stuff we can't. As you can see, this is in a utility, we place it in a utility, so for references, but yeah, it wipes out the whole side of the car, so.
Sheriff, didn't you say that one of these manufacturers were making something that fit in the car better or something, or is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, there is actually some other concepts I know because, you know, I get that Auto Magazine just like he does all the time. Ford. Technology, they're always something smaller.
Ford and Chrysler offer a 12-inch screen to be integrated into the dash, it's an option. Then you'd put your MDT in the back of the car and then the screen for the computer would be in the dash.
That's what I think I saw.
It's just now starting to come out as to, but we haven't gotten pricing on that stuff yet. But this is what we're talking about in the updated MDT.
Problem with that is we'll have to buy my glasses afterwards.
Yeah, you can't tilt it and you can't whatever, it's straight on. Again, we talked about, we need an eight, we're requesting eight vehicles. Option one is going to be really our only option right now with the Tahos being out. These prices are really close, we're working on, I'm waiting on some quotes back for other equipment, but 379,834 would be for eight Explorers and one of them would be a K-9 unit up and ready to go.
So just going with the Explorers, you're getting an extra car because of the cost savings? No, you're.
No, it's still, no, it's still eight. The option two would be seven Explorers and one Tahoe.
So seven Explorers, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's all right. It'd be, yeah, but we just, instead of doing seven and one, we're doing all eight. Just to say, because of the Tahos, we won't be able to get a Tahoe now because of the strike and GM canceled a lot of orders on that.
So the additional equipment, the 8600, is, what in addition to the MDT is in that?
Excuse me, all right. When we buy a car from state contract, it's just a basic car. We have to then install the lights, the siren, the camera system, the radio, the cages, front and back, decals, and a radar unit, so yeah, it's.
And if you had to, just to ballpark on what the MDT cost us?
The MDT cost we have here at 4,142 per car.
Okay, because it might, it might fare well to at least see, since they're introducing them already installed in the vehicles, to compare what it costs to add on or purchased?
It's not an MDT in the car, it's just a screen that you would plug your MDT into.
Like a projector system?
Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
It opens up vision is really all it does. We still need our MDT system to put into the car.
You wouldn't have to have it in the front seat though, blocking your view.
No, no, it could be in the back, it'd be plugged in docking station in the back, yeah.
Sure, okay, thank you.
I'm still trying to figure out the numbers here. So when we look at outfitting the vehicle, you're telling me that each vehicle requires 15 to 16,000 dollars of equipment?
Yes, lights and sirens and console is 4,399. Front partition is 725. The weapon mount for the shotgun and the rifle is 449, sorry. Our rear partition is 429. And then, yeah, we're going on to the decals are 226, the antennas are 206. Again, we're talking the MDT and mount would be 4,142. Provision dash camera, front and rear cameras is 2930 and then the radar units are 1,167.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's important for the public to know, they think, well, you go and buy a patrol car and, you know, if you look at, because if anybody looks online, state purchasing, you know, we're starting with a price around 31.3 for the vehicle and then by the time you load it up with another 16,000 dollars worth of equipment, we're up to 47,000 a unit.
Yes, we have tried to recycle as much as we can, but a lot of this stuff is IT, it has a lifecycle as well. So five, six years, we put it in a car and two months later, we're replacing it anyway. So it's redundant to try to recycle IT equipment because they can't update it. The camera systems, they start failing, we're having issues now with the cameras. They have the internal battery to keep time in them, they're going, the batteries go dead and then we've got to send them back and have them fixed and it's, so it's.
One thing I want to add, with Grant here, a lot of these departments, like in Lorraine, will send them out to like Bassu or B&amp;C, they install all the stuff in, obviously for the cost. He does it all for us, which is actually saving us money for installation of this equipment.
Now, these are state bid, we can't stay in the county on them?
They're state contract, if a dealership in the county will match, meet state contract, then yes, we can, but they have to meet it, match it, apples for apples and whatever. Years past, for Mint Chevrolet has worked with this and gotten the Caprices for us at some time, it was a struggle.
Will we at least attempt?
Yeah, we could, we could talk to a couple of the dealerships and look at, you know.
Normally because they buy in such bulk, they can't match the prices that they get.
Right.
We're going to pay more if we try to go to local dealers.
Right, right.
I guess the question I get asked a lot by the public is, we see so many SUVs on the road now for law enforcement, yet we continue to see state patrol using Chargers. Obviously, we in Lorraine County like our Fords, but I guess I'm trying to figure out, was there any consideration given to sedans, yes or no, and why?
Well, Dodge Charger didn't make state contract this year.
Pardon me?
Dodge Charger did not make state contract this year.
I'm looking at state contract, all wheel drive Dodge Charger V8 sedan.
I guess one thing I want to add is what you have to remember is you're comparing apples to oranges. They do traffic, we do everything, criminal activity, they only do it on state property. You predominantly see them on state highways, interstates, stuff like that.
I'm just trying to.
We're carrying like evidence equipment, you've got AR-15, we've got a lot of equipment that we're carrying in our crime scene stuff, where they're not doing that stuff, we are.
I'm just trying to figure out how we were able to make sedans work before, but now we can't make sedans work. That's the question the public asked me.
Again, I'll go back to the Crown Vic. Great car, police officers still wish they had a Crown Victoria. It was big. Now they're making all these little Caprices, I don't know if you've ever seen the trunks in those, they're very small. I wish they still made a Crown Vic, we'd keep buying them. They stopped doing that years ago and I can tell you, at some point, there won't be any sedans anymore. Even the car dealerships are going.
Ford's going to only make the Mustangs, that's it.
And especially us for equipment wise, that's why we need the extra room.
But on the Dodge Charger, our guys require to carry a full-size spare, okay? Because in the middle of night, the tire goes flat, you have to have a full-size spare in the car to make it pursuit ready. The Dodge Charger, if you get a full-size spare in it, it sits on top of the trunk, you lose all your trunk space. They can only fit a mini-spare underneath the floor, so we would lose all of our trunk basically for what the guy, the equipment the guys need to carry. The backseat, excuse me, once you put a partition in it, I know people have told me before, it's just a prisoner, who cares? It is hard to get a person in that car with a backseat. You have to put a plastic, whole new plastic backseat insert in there to be able to get them in there. And so many people they arrest, they're pretty big. So if I got a deputy trying to fight to get a guy in a car, again, that doesn't make it viable for us as an option, it's just they're small all around.
Okay, no, it's just, that's a question that keeps coming up, people ask me, why would we invest in SUVs, which, you know, the public perceives as taking up a lot more gas and probably higher maintenance compared to a sedan being, you know.
The Dodge Chargers use more fuel and they're higher maintenance with the Hemi's in them.
Okay, that's fine, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yes, yes.
I guess, you know, it's important for the, for the public to know, I was looking at, you know, the purchases we've made over the years, we've always been very supportive of the sheriff's department in making sure that the communities have the proper protection and proper cars out there, but I think it's important for the public to know that since 2016, we purchased 32 vehicles and we've made an investment of 999,000.
Dodge Charger did not make state contract this year.
I'm looking at state contract, all wheel drive Dodge Charger V eight sedan.
I guess one thing I want to add is what you have to remember is, you're comparing apples to oranges. They do traffic, we do everything, criminal activity, they only do it on state property. You predominantly see them on state highways, interstates, stuff like that.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to-
We're carrying like evidence equipment, you got AR fifteen, we got a lot of equipment that we're carrying in our crime scene stuff. Where, they're not doing that stuff, we are.
I'm just trying to figure out how we were able to make sedans work before, but now we can't make sedans work. That's the question the public asked me.
Great car, police officers still wish they had a Crown Vic. It was big, now they're making all these little Caprices, I don't know if you've ever seen the trunks in those. They're very small. I wish they still made the Crown Vic, we'd keep buying them. They stopped doing that years ago, and I can tell you at some point, there won't be any sedans anymore. Even the car dealerships are going-
Ford's gonna only make the Mustangs, that's it.
And especially us for equipment wise, that's why we need the extra room.
But on the Dodge Charger, our guys require to carry a full-size spare, okay? Because in the middle of night, the car tire goes flat, you have to have a full-size spare in the car to make it pursuit-ready. The Dodge Charger, if you get a full-size spare in it, it sits on top of the trunk, you lose all your trunk space. They can only fit a mini-spare underneath the floor. So, we would lose all of our trunk, basically, for what the guy, the equipment the guys need to carry. The backseat, excuse me, once you put a partition in it, I know people have told me before, it's just a prisoner, who cares? It is hard to get a person in that car with a backseat. You have to put a plastic, whole new plastic backseat insert in there to be able to get him in there. And so many people they arrest, they're pretty big. So, if I got a deputy trying to fight to get a guy in a car, again, that doesn't make it viable for us as an option. It's just they're small all around.
Okay, no, it's just, that's a question that keeps coming up, I have people ask me, why would we invest in SUVs, which, you know, the public perceives as taking up a lot more gas and probably higher maintenance compared to a sedan being, you know, maybe more fuel efficient.
The Dodge Chargers use more fuel and they're higher maintenance than what the Hemi's in them.
That's fine, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, yes, yes.
I guess, you know, it's important for the, for the public to know, I was looking at, you know, the purchases we've made over the years. We've always been very supportive of the Sheriff's Department in making sure that the communities have the proper protection and proper cars out there. But I think it's important for the public to know that since 2016, we purchased thirty-two vehicles. And we've made an investment of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, you know, we've been stepping up to the plate. But I think for those of you here today, you can see that when you start looking at forty-seven thousand dollars per vehicle, we know those costs are only going to continue to go up, that we have to kind of get our, our arms around this. And I had a conversation with the administrator, and we'd like to sit down, have a conversation with you, Sheriff, in your department, try to figure out if we can really put a, a real strong, firm program in place. You've been doing a great job of managing everything, but these costs continue to escalate. Whether we look at some hybrid approach of maybe mixing some leasing with some purchasing, trying to see if that's something we can make work. I know some of those discussions have been held in the past, maybe we need to have it again and take a look at it. But anything we can do to get our arms around it, because, as I said, since 2016, we've invested almost a million dollars, and we're looking at almost four hundred thousand dollars with purchases that you're proposing here today.
Yeah, you know, as I said, the, the, in 2011, the Crown Vics were still only eighteen thousand, so, yeah, they've gone up quite a bit. And it's, it's hard, it's hard to stomach. The Crown Vic, we call them the dinosaur car, the technology wasn't there, and, and that's just, you're, you're, you're starting to pay for the technology they're integrating in all these cars now. And, you know, it's, it's a lot to stomach, yes.
You mentioned the leasing, when's the last time we looked at possible leasing, or will they allow us?
Captain Grisdowski was here, when he was, he was actually our vehicle maintenance guy, worked his way up through the ranks.
Right, he, yeah.
He, he checked it out at one time, and he didn't really see any savings in it.
Yeah, I, I don't remember the specs on that, but it was, it was looked at, we can look again, you know, things change, but it's, yeah.
And we wanted you also to know that, you know, obviously, this is probably the worst-case scenario price-wise. It, it could come in cheaper depending on MDTs, how much maintenance you're gonna have, you're right, it could come in. I just didn't want to say, we need twenty thousand and come back and say, oh, wait a minute, it was forty thousand.
Yeah, right.
You know, we'd like to at least come over with some realistic prices for you.
These, these are realistic, Sheriff.
Unfortunately, they are.
Well, it's, it's a lot of money, but it's the cost of doing business. I mean, like you said, these guys, that's what they do, they're in their cars all day, every day, twenty-four, seven. And, you know, they have to be safe vehicles for them to, to ride in, and-
Well, we appreciate the hard work you do putting all that together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordez, you want to flip us back over? Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to our board business, yes.
There are no investments appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances or repayments? Requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Commissioner, I do have a few personnel issues this morning. Some possible new hires at Job and Family Services, maybe nine-one-one, Collection Center, we can discuss those. I have dates for beginning negotiations with the steelworkers I want to discuss, and some issues with regard to those negotiations. One pending legal matter, and I'm still working on that purchase of real estate. So, we'll talk about all those things, all those matters allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion. So, to ask, it's a conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session, and we talk about the matters that I've explained.
Thank you.
Approved, we have the reading in the minutes of February fifth.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approved payment for victim domestic violence fund to Lorraine County Safe Harbor Inc., DBA Genesis House for twenty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, as collected by Lorraine County for period July first through December thirty-first, two thousand nine, in accordance with the ORC two-three-zero-three-point-two-zero-one, and three-three-one-one-three-point-three-four-through-three-nine.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approved interim lease agreement with Larry Women's Club, two eighteen East Avenue, Larry, for thirty-five parking spaces, effective for four months, commencing March first, for a total of twenty-one hundred, payable monthly at five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
I know you want to talk about this. You found some space.
A little bit, and so it begins.
Right.
The intention right now is to completely vacate the parking deck on March sixteenth. We have laid out a strategy with regard to where things are going to be parked. I'll have a detailed written piece for you soon. Also, I request the Sandy to set up a meeting with key affected departments, so that we can have those conversations. We've already worked with some of the ones that are gonna be more pragmatic, such as children's services, that brings children in and out of the building. There's a few other things that need special attention. Currently, the plan will be to use the parking lot down at the Port Authority complex on Abbey Road. We've re, we're rejigging the loops with the buses, the downtown buses, to accommodate people to use the bus. Still haven't completely worked that out. Now, we're going to be asking the departments to vary schedules for a while, so that not everybody's arriving at the same time, because they do not have enough transportation ability to move everybody at the same time. We're also looking to put together some closer parking to this building, if people, if enough people want to do a ride share, so that we can eliminate some need for parking for a few months. We'll be filling up the Transportation Center, some adjacent lots that we're renting, we're using everything we have. It's not going to be without its problems. We're trying not to use the Washington area Avenue parking lot, it's a public parking lot, and we provide it for in the city. And the reason for that, and I'm gonna try to keep our people from using it as best I can, is because the juries use that parking lot. And if we're filling up Washington, then when the juries are called, there'll be no place for them to park. Recognizing the days that the juries are called, we'll be picking up juries at Washington, and we'll be picking up employees on Abbey. It's going to be quite crowded sometimes on those, on those buses going around. I'm looking for some relief in that now, I haven't quite figured that piece out, but I will. This worked a little better, we had talked about renting spots out at the mall. This worked a little bit better, would have cost us between nine and twelve thousand dollars, maybe even more depending on the number of spaces at the mall. We're gonna have this, the street cleaners come through over our parking lot, and then we're going to restripe it for a few thousand dollars, because the striping's bad on it right now. Once we do that, that'll, that'll gain us about one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty parking spots to use temporarily. So, I, I think that works out well. There'll be more to follow, anticipate everybody being aggravated. As long as everybody's aggravated, we don't discriminate, I think it's fine.
Just make everybody mad at.
It, it's, and I still have to work out with the public across the street, with the corner lot, how to, how to do that, because I anticipate our employees, some of our employees will not be compliant, and we'll fill up that lot. So, I have to figure out how to monitor that, so the public has some places to park still. I'm working on bringing out a portable booth and monitoring that lot, I just don't know how I tell public from employee. You know, maybe with a, you know, Mr. Mark's mustache, I don't know. But it's not that easy when somebody gets out of a car and walks into a building, because I don't know all, everybody that works here, I don't think anybody does.
Well, our parking attendant knows people, he knows them pretty well.
He knows everybody. Ray May, so, you know, we're, we're looking at those options, but we have to maintain parking for the public at the same time. Hopefully, we'll be done by July seventeenth, and this will be over with. But as we talked about when we let the contracts, there may be some unforeseen conditions once we really start digging into the work. The company will be staging on the top part of the parking deck the week before we take everybody out of the parking deck, because it's closed right now, it's been closed for two years, and so they're gonna stage up there all their materials and work stuff. And I'll also have to look at a few people that may have some special needs that come forward during the course of this. My biggest concern is if employees have to leave for an emergency, how to get them to where, where they need to be, because there could be a delay. We're hoping that there's, you know, a bus passing by every fifteen or twenty minutes, but if you have an emergency at home, that doesn't give you a good reassurance. I haven't figured that out yet.
Maybe just like a one-on-call runner or something.
Again, you know, driving, everybody's emergency, whether it's a baby or a cat, right, seems to, you know, warrant immediate attention. So, I don't want to be trying to deal with those things and decide whether we shuttle somebody. You know, I've, I've seen people's emergencies that I wouldn't classify as being too urgent, but to them, they get all caught up in it, and so, an on-demand service could get really problematic for us. Just, we got a few more weeks, we're working on it, but that's the bit of the plan. You may see a few more of these, to rent some spaces that we can pick up closer by and distribute to some of the people. But, as you know, parking has always been an issue down here for us, and it continues to be an issue, and it will be a future issue that's going to get nothing but bigger.
Yeah, we're just really asking that everyone exercise cooperation and patience with a capital C and a capital P, because that's what it's gonna take to get through this. You know, this is a taxpayer-owned garage, we're trying to stretch the life of it. The, the cost of building these things is outrageous, what is it, twenty-four thousand dollars a spot?
Four to twenty-five thousand a spot, and more than likely, where we would, if we put a new one where the old one is, it'd be more than that to get us, get it in there, because you gotta get the old one out, the back of the building's configured, it's really funky back there for how they put that garage in. And so, I would, I would think that the cost of construction back there would maybe even a little bit higher.
Yeah, so you have the option of either trying to work around people's vehicles, which we decided we did not want to do, because that's a recipe for disaster. And it's much better just to have everybody out of there and, and working on it. The logistical challenge is working with jobs and, children's services, rather, because of bringing children, you know, into the building and those emergency runs that they have to make with their cars.
I was, I was here when we did the last renovation, and we scaffold the garage, and we kept moving scaffolding around, and curtaining it off. First, I don't think the work was done as completely acceptable as I like, because they kept moving, and they were encountering lots of obstacles. Secondly, there was problems with the parking and people and moving to that, that construction. But it also took an inordinate amount of time. The reason this is taking four months is we're going to work six tens or six twelves to get the work done. So, we've paid for expedited work, so that we weren't out of that garage. I really wanted to start closer to April first, but the weather's been good, we're trying to get it done as soon as we can, because I, I wanted it to be a little warmer, but I'm thinking, the winter hasn't been so bad, but watch, the first day we move everybody out there, we'll have six feet of snow. It's just the way my luck goes. But I think, I think we'll be past most of the winter time, we're going to continue to accelerate that very rapidly, so that this problem disappears. But I want to caution everybody, January, July seventeenth should be our date, but if we run into some significant problems, that may get extended a bit. Of course, we're hoping to get another six or seven-plus years out of the garage before we have to deal with this again. That's another thing I want to state, so if somebody doesn't come back, then they say, well, why did you put all that money in the garage? It's still a vastly less costly decision than to try to put a new garage in right now. And by the way, we'd have to park everybody all over for two and a half years. Because, but from beginning of planning and design and letting of contracts and the tear down, and going through the winter, and then back into the next season, maybe eighteen months, I may be exaggerating a bit, but no less than eighteen months to completely do a replacement, and I don't want to be here for that.
And I guess the overall-
So, we gotta get six or seven years out of this garage.
Well, and I think cooperation and patience are easier for anybody who has seen some of the damage that is already resulting from the fallen chunks of concrete, the dripping rusted joints and seams, cars are being damaged. We can live with, with auto damage, but as soon as an individual gets hurt in that garage, we've been very unresponsible to the, the concerns, and I think it's, it's simply said, we have no option, but to get this done as quickly as possible.
Yeah, there aren't many parking garages in the county either, so there aren't a lot of folks who are able to go to work every day and park in a garage. I mean, maybe over at the hospital, but when you start to think about all the large employers in the county, it's not like everybody's got a parking garage they can park their vehicle in. So, I mean, there will be some inconvenience, you may have to wipe the snow off your car after work, maybe in March or early April, when we still get the snow here in lovely northern Ohio, but it's just-
Groundhog said we're gonna have early spring, so.
Can I park outside the garage? I haven't had any real issues.
So, it just has to be done, but, you know, the time has come, and I just want to thank the administrator for trying to coordinate the logistics, because this is a logistical challenge, to say the least. So, thank you for all your time and effort you're putting into this, but the cooperation's gonna be the key part, it's gonna be an inconvenience for some folks, but by July, I think we'll be much better off.
I'm hopeful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Nine-one-one, purchase, cat, export, interface, and emergency reporting from New World in the amount of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty, and annual maintenance fee of seven thousand five hundred and sixty.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I want to talk about this a little bit.
Okay.
And I, I think you saw some of my emails going back and forth that I included you on. This interface, right now, there's, there's a couple of software approaches that the fire departments are using, but we're not, we're not exporting information out of New World into the systems they're using, because here is some information that, that is catalogued in the New World, that would be good for our firefighters to be able to view, too. This interface, excuse me, will take that data from, and those data sets that, that are applicable to that use, and be able to coordinate them and then send them out to those platforms they're using, so that they have that information. As you know, I've been, I've been frustrated that I have not been able to corral these folks into one system. I, I haven't given up on that, I think that was obvious from the emails I've been sending out. The resistance, I'm trying to gauge, you know, where the maximum resistance is and what's the majority, because we may just have to go with a majority view on this. I just have, unlike with law enforcement, where we're able to eventually gain cooperation from everybody, I, I'm just not getting it with the firefighters right now. So, we need to take a strong look at and count, look at how many want to be in one system and how big that majority is. If it's not very big, then we've still got a problem, because then I'm gonna have warring factions over which, which platforms we're using. We have been using Firehouse and committed to that years ago, I believe it was at the request of the association, but a lot of people don't like the Firehouse reporting and want to be on something else. But there's those that are hawkish about it, and they, they're committed to it, so I'm working on it. I told you, I have a goal that everybody's gonna be using the same, we, we got one, one side of the house done, I just, before I go, I want to get the other side of the house done, so I'm not gonna give up on it. So, I'll be back with you some more, but this is gonna start that process. Regardless of whatever platform we stay committed to, we would still need this interface, so we can, we can actually merge the data over into firefighter reporting software. A lot of people are unaware how much they have to report to the state about response times and type of incidents and things like that. So, they need software to be able to monitor all of this, because that's, that's what the state is looking at, how fast they get to a scene, how, what, what equipment got to the scene, and all that's reportable, most folks don't realize it, but all of that's reportable to the state. The same way with the New World, you know, they put those reports in, and a lot of that goes down to the state also. If you remember, early on, we had a problem with being able to get that data down on the forms correctly at a New World. But, you know, slowly, we're chipping away at it, so I'm hopeful.
So, we're picking up the cost, they just have to agree to it?
Correct.
I know, that, that should-
Well, you know-
Be processed more regularly, I would think.
Usually, he who pays the fiddler.
You know, it's, it's the same thing with, with, with the, what I, what I term the reverse nine-one-one alerts. We utilized that quite a bit last night, we sent out, three times, we sent out over two hundred thousand emails last night, while we had a little bit of an issue with our system. I cannot encourage people enough to sign up for their community alerts and get them on their phones and get the text messages, because you're gonna find out what's going on in your community. Last night, we had to use some landlines on our nine-one-one, because we're having problems from the company getting the phone lines into us. And, you know, we were using that alert system big time, and we were banging on it pretty good, and a lot of, we still only have a hand, I don't say handful, but not enough people in Lorraine County have signed up for those alerts. And you can get them just from your community. You can get them from just North Ridgeville, just Elyria, just Amherst. Uh, or you could get them from the county, on the countywide. You can sign up for, for multiple ones. Uh, if you work in Elyria, sign up for that one about, you'll give, send you the weather conditions, road conditions. And if you live in North Ridgeville, get that one about your home community. So you pick and choose.
Alerts, uh, road closures, all kinds of things. Yeah.
And, and I, I, I will say that I have not seen an abuse by the communities. We have guidelines for what they can send out. It's a locally controlled thing, but we also have the master control and can send to everybody or just one community through our Homeland Security Emergency Management. So I think maybe I'm going to have Tom Kelly come in and make a presentation on this so we can get more information out on it. Uh, but it was a key instrument that we needed last night and performed well for us.
Yeah. Most people don't know, I mean, when, if you had a landline, you were automatically enrolled in it. But if you have a cell phone, you have to actually go on the WENS, W E N S and sign up for it. So, thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Job and family authorized purchase service with Lutheran Metropolitan Ministries Cleveland in the amount of forty-eight thousand three hundred and twelve dollars for protective services for adults using Title XX Social Service Black Grant Funds for the fiscal year 2020, effective retroactive October first, two thousand nineteen through September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and authorized directory to execute behalf of the board of prosecutors per request form.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Comments?
Well, this is, you know, you've had me working on this for several months. Um, I have one more piece, uh, that I, in fact, they sent for an update from mental health yesterday. Uh, and I hope that, you know, this, these, these, uh, that the probate judge is going to be more satisfied with the services because he assigns the, the guardians through probate. And, you know, we definitely had a weakening of the system with some things that went on, but the biggest piece was that we had, we had, people in guardianships that were assigned them years and years ago, but were not, moved away from us. And we weren't funding the mechanism as fully as it needed to be funded.
Going outside the county, you mean?
Well, you know, uh, one, one came when somebody went outside the county for various misunderstandings. Uh, job and family services would stop paying because they went outside the county. They were in a location outside the county. Then we were told that we couldn't use our funds, our federal funds because they're outside the county. Well, that just wasn't accurate. And I, I mean, I had to go back and challenge them to the fact that yes, if the person is placed outside, they haven't chosen to be outside. Unless we can do a handoff to a, a, an adjacent county system, we can't abandon those people and not pay for their guardianship. We're the ones that placed them in the guardianship to adult protective services mostly, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm finished up the job and family services piece. I'm hoping to finish up the mental health piece because there's finding out how many people were assigned years ago that we still have a legacy to, that has been forgotten and still have to cover those services. A big problem we've had with getting the volunteers here, uh, you know, this is partly paid, partly volunteers. Most of our placements have been leaving Lorain County because of lack of facilities. So getting volunteer guardians that want to drive from Lorain all the way into Cuyahoga, Medina and, and beyond to provide for guardianship services has been very challenging. Uh, so, you know, hopefully they're ramping up, getting more volunteers and we, we have, we're figuring out how to, how to compensate them at a level that keeps them involved in wanting to do this. But more and more of the placements are leaving and it's more and more challenging to get somebody very, very committed to a, a guardianship. And, um, the probate judge and has talked to me many times on this and I'm hoping to get that success so that he feels satisfied that we have a stronger guardianship program in Lorain. It, it has not been as effective as, as it needed to be. So I'll bring the other piece back to you hopefully in a couple of weeks. That one's taking a little more time. Uh, and then I'm going to meet with the probate judge again.
Yeah. Thanks for the time you put in on this. I know this is, uh, really important to make sure it's, uh, done right and that people are properly served. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorized sheriff to utilize Lura Mac credit card in the amount of two hundred, twenty-five hundred for permissible expenses in accordance with policy.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve release of all claims in agreement to identify correction Sergeant Mike Mettler for the purchase of K-9 Maggie for one dollar, who is retiring on January seventeen, twenty twenty, after eight years.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Mike, did you want to come up and introduce Maggie? I know, she, to the audience, but she hasn't been on camera yet.
She already took over the room. We know that already. Hey, I just, uh, want to congratulate Sergeant Mettler with Maggie. I tell you, Maggie's been one of the best dogs we've ever had at the sheriff's office.
Is she malamute?
Yes.
Malamute?
Malinois.
Malinois.
But the thing with Mike is that he's been a canine handler for a lot of years. Uh, he had one of the toughest dogs before that I was almost ready to get rid of, was Casper. And that dog wanted to bite everybody. Mike took, Mike took that dog over. And after he had her for a while, we could take her into a kindergarten class and all the kids could pet her, just like Maggie. So he is an excellent handler. Uh, I want to give him accolades. His, his boss is here, his wife's here from the, uh, which is Maggie's boss, but.
She does ninety percent of the dog stuff, I totally believe.
I, I even told Mike that when Maggie retires, I'm going to pay my dollars. So I paid the dollar to get her retired. Also Sergeant Barnes was here earlier and Captain Hammond, who oversee the canine program. Uh, Sergeant Barnes just lost his dog Ozzy pretty recently. Uh, she's been retired for years, but as you guys know, these become family members.
Oh, yeah.
They're not just working dogs, but they take them home, back and forth to work. I even asked Mike, I says, was she kind of confused a couple of weeks because you weren't bringing her to work? And she was looking at him like, isn't it time to go to work now?
She was real confused because she got to go.
Yeah, right.
But she, she is an excellent dog. She's another one. Uh, she can go into like classes with kids. They can pet her. But if he tells that dog to bite me, she's biting me. I can tell you that right now. And that's the way we want to have them. Mike, did you want to?
We'll work for cupcakes.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the sheriff and everybody who gave me an opportunity to be in the canine. And, uh, I've been lucky, um, both of the dogs that I had the opportunity to work with, it really wasn't the dog. It was, uh, they just needed some, some time. And again, my family, my wife, um, and my kids, especially, uh, with Casper. If it wasn't for my daughter, um, that dog probably would have been put down, but she let, let the dog be a dog. So that was pretty lucky in that regard.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I, I know how important they are. My brother-in-law, you know, Ron Trifaleti, he was, uh, canine, he trained them for narcotics and stuff. And so I was raised with them my whole life and they are, they are part of the family and, but they do such great work.
Well, not only that, I mean, but the amount of savings these dogs are doing for the people. Um, you guys all know that we get assaulted. We have to be fixed. You guys get to pay for that. And then if we break somebody, we have to fix them and we get to pay for that.
Right.
Um, so when me and Maggie go into an area, uh, she found her tennis ball in his pocket.
Time to play.
But that's usually all it takes and there's no more fighting and it's over.
Right, right. Well, thank you.
As you know, we have two of our other handlers here. Uh, Shay Atkins is here and Glenn Mead, who also have the two dogs that, you know, we have just graduated two dogs from the State Patrol Academy, which are two excellent dogs that we've added to the jail. So we continue to have three for the road patrol and three in the jail. And, and it does help us with our, uh, workers' comp claims with the officers. And we have, I can tell you, since we've instituted this dog program over sixteen years, we don't have too many people get bit. I mean, all you gotta do is take the dog in there and have him bark a little bit and they're like, okay.
Sixteen years and we've had three bites on him.
Yeah. But they'll, they'll fight with the COs sometimes, but they don't want to get bit by a dog. Nobody does. Yeah, we had one of them, we had one was a maintenance guy. Okay, thanks, commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Happy retirement, Maggie.
Yeah. That's great. Somebody's chomping at the bit.
Call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Thank you. You want to wait till they, I don't know, if they're leaving. Public comment?
Public comment?
Uh, Gerald W. Phillips, four sixty-one Winward Way. I found it very informative and interesting as a CPA, the sheriff's, uh, presentation. I didn't intend to talk on that. Uh, if you look at, uh, the data that he provided, for twenty twenty, it's eight vehicles. Look at the fleet of sixty-five with an eight-year life, that's eight years. You look at the thirty-two vehicles replaced in the four years of sixteen to nineteen, it's, it's again eight. So from a perspective, it looks like the historical data is he can budget eight vehicles per year as far as, uh, replacement. In the current year for twenty twenty is three hundred and eighty thousand for the eight vehicles. That's forty-seven thousand five hundred approximately. For the, for previous years, there was a million-dollar number thrown out, uh, for, for the thirty-two vehicles. Uh, that comes out to be thirty-two, so I think that million dollars is inaccurate. It'd probably be nice to get exact figures for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. For a budget for twenty twenty-one, probably can budget eight vehicles at, uh, fifty thousand, four hundred thousand, uh, per year. Uh, and then as far as leasing, leasing probably is not going to be a very good option because you'd have to go through, you know, normal, uh, dealers or financing companies. They're going to do their interest rate, their internal rate of return is going to be higher than what the government can borrow at since they're tax exempt. In leasing, you're going to have a shorter term than the eight-year life. Therefore, you're going to have to pay for the installation removal of that equipment. And you gotta also factor in the, uh, lifespan of the sixteen thousand of the equipment. Uh, if you look at, uh, the, uh, uh, residual value, you know, I didn't see what is the, uh, resale value of the eight vehicles, uh, being replaced, e- even if there's a market for it. Uh, you know, I don't know if there's a market for used police vehicles with equipment in it. And that's another factor why leasing wouldn't be a, uh, probably a viable option because there's got to be a market for used police vehicles. And since the sheriff indicated that these vehicles have a hundred and sixty thousand dollar, a hundred and sixty thousand miles on them, uh, I can't imagine that, uh, the residual value would be that significant. I don't know how much time I got left.
You got about twenty more seconds.
Yeah. So since I only get three minutes in the Phillips three-minute rule, I'll just talk about my other topic next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning.
Can you just state your name for us and where you're from for the record?
Sure. My name's John Vertochnick and I live at five-five, five-three Main Avenue, North Ridgeville.
Thank you.
Uh, today I'd like to top, talk about the, uh, nine-one-one failure last night. Uh, I've been a resident of North Ridgeville for forty-eight years and I, uh, worked for the telephone company on nine-one-one equipment, uh, since day one. And I was a little confused last night because, uh, anytime I worked on equipment, there was always a backup system that would automatically switch over. If a call failed, the computer would pick it up and automatically, uh, transfer it to the alternate PSAP, which would be either another location or non-emergency numbers. And, uh, before I left, oh, five, eight years before I left the phone company and retired, uh, we also had a transfer switch where the, uh, the, uh, PSAP would automatically throw that P, that, that switch and it would automatically transfer those calls over to, uh, the alternate number. You know, I was, uh, wondering to know whether, uh, that was in place to prevent people from getting, uh, dead air when they call anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Teresa Shea, five-nineteen East Avenue, Elyria. Dear commissioners and elected officials, I am here today against all odds to remind you how much the citizens of Lorain County who need transportation and actual buses need you to look not only at the logic and practicality of a bus system, but an economic asset for our county. New businesses and employees want transportation that can be counted on. No employer wants to come here and employ a lot of people when they can't get to and from work. I think you're starting to understand that a little bit with your garage situation. I see in the paper the efforts of one commissioner to ride a bus and of the transportation manager Sharon. Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, next, let's try walking to the bus stop. Uh, I guess you'll be doing that, but not as extreme as your citizens. That isn't marked, they're not marked, and has no shelter and taking a bus that runs, say, to Apple's grocery store off of Cleveland Street. The buses run every two hours, so you won't be close to a bathroom you can, you can use. And you must be there, uh, close to two hours when you shop. Plus only getting enough food that you can carry. The alternative is walking, uh, try walking from Broad Street to Walgreens. Don't wear your heels, Lori. Um, all three of you, you two, Matt.
Yeah, I don't wear heels.
I'm older than you, so you can do it. Commissioners, and see what it feels like. You're still not at the grocery store. I am not young and I have much difficulty even walking from my home to this meeting. I could walk here, but not walk back. Put yourself in the struggle. See what it feels like so you can participate. Even try walking extra blocks, which I guess you will be, um, in the, in the spring, and see how hard it is. Try a snowy day on East Avenue, my street. Ignoring what is needed for a whole segment of the population is not what should be. The bus size is right, the route's incomplete. People laugh at me and others are glad I come here to ask for bus service that helps. I know you need state funds. It's all you say. I hope to see our state senators soon. I'm trying to get an appointment. Should I tell them what, that you haven't done to make the world better for me and others? Make a good plan. Use the communities and people like me to expand our bus system so it helps rich and poor. And I guess it will be now. Um, a good plan always attracts money. And if money comes, you are ready. Buses signs, good schedules and a new Lorain County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The, uh, I want to respond at what happened with the nine-one-one system last night. Gentleman had some really good questions and I can tell he knows what he's talking about. The, the, and I was at nine-one-one until two o'clock in the morning and plus, so I was there. The nine-one-one equipment didn't fail. The, the calls coming in from the provider of the services were failing. Our equipment was working fine. And as you suggested, we have, we not only have, uh, uh, single redundancy, we have a quadruple redundancy on our equipment. That is, we have a backup at the primary and then we have a double-legged backup to our secondary that's still very much active. We have two backup generators, one natural gas, one diesel. We have electrical power off two electrical grids. We have our high-speed internet on two different fiber optic, one coming off dock, one coming off regular, coming from different locations. We, we have provided for every possible scenario except that the backbone, um, uh, that brings the calls in, that belongs to the phone company, fails, doesn't work right. And that's what occurred last night. The calls were coming in, they were hitting Motorola, uh, Vester. And when they would come in, they were being rejected off the Vester server. Once they got rejected, they would roll back down to a secondary server that had less problems with permissions on the coding, because every call these days, they're coded now and they're telling the nine-one-one what to, what to do. It's a nine-one-one call coming in. When it dropped down to the secondary server at, at Motorola, it was able to sometimes penetrate because the permissions on that server are less. Because it is the backup server. When, after a few hours, when they would dissected the code on the calls coming in, there was coding for some reason that got into those calls that was causing them to reject. We had to remove all that coding. The provider had to remove the coding on the call. Once that was done, calls started flooding through, you know, they're coming through. But, you know, this is a little bit beyond myself. I, I too, twenty-five, thirty years ago, worked with phones. These days are so much more sophisticated with, everything's computer-generated. These days, they're so much more sophisticated with, everything's computer-generated. They had to go by line by line through the code to find out what happened at the phone company, and it wasn't the phone company that found it. It was our people trying to figure out why the calls wouldn't get through and getting rejected off the primary. When it rolled to the secondary, again, as I suggested, because it's more tolerant of those things, because you try to keep all your, you know, that's your firewall. You're trying to keep all the bad stuff out of your system. They were able to get calls. That's why sometimes it'd be waited, and as much as twenty rings, you may get through, which is unacceptable, quite frankly. But we sent out an alert very late saying that, you know, we're still wanting everybody to use the landlines, the seven digits, but if they were on the 911 call, they were persistent, the call would get through. Right around, I want to say around 1:00, 1:30, we cleared that problem up. We were constantly testing, but we found no deficiencies with our system whatsoever. And this morning, I have the group reconnecting, and they're probably reconnected now. Also, for some reason, and I still haven't fully comprehended it, the provider of the, for us to receive calls, switched the calls from coming in at Burns Road to coming in at the Gates Building. Yeah, yeah. And so I have some concerns with that. And at the same time that we had this receive failure, the sentry tell was working on the system. So a lot of things that are still a bit unexplained because coding just doesn't change itself, and the phone doesn't decide that it's not going to directly go to Burns, it's going to go to Gateway. There were some changes made. I still haven't gotten all the answers, but the equipment that we have did not cause the problem last night. And I remember once, when we lost all the seven digits, we were having problems with the seven digits, it's because somebody nicked the fiber optic line in Twinsburg. And all the way out here, we felt, we felt the tremors all the way out here, and we were down on part of our system for that for quite a while. And it took, it took a long time to figure out that what was going on in Twinsburg was affecting us all the way over here. And that's happened twice to us. So I really appreciate your questions this morning. I hope I provided somewhat of an adequate answer. I'm not an expert in that stuff. We had, we had several teams of people for several hours, conference calling and working, trying to coordinate the efforts together, because everybody's remote these days, too. So I'm talking to people at the center with our service provider and this all, because they're constantly monitoring that stuff. It's monitored 24/7. They've got so many things in place, they see a hiccup before we hear it, and they're working on it. And so we had, we had, you know, several large companies, we had our consultants on the phone, and everybody stayed with it until we got a solution, but it was extremely frustrating. The commissioners were involved through the course of the night. We kept them involved. They knew what was going on. I relied heavily on our alerting system, as I suggested earlier, to try to get the word out. So you must be signed up in North Ridgeville. You've probably got the text alerts, sir?
No, Facebook.
Oh, Facebook, okay. Somebody, we don't usually Facebook, so I knew somebody would put it out there on the Facebook. But if you're not signed up for the alerts, you should. I live in North Ridgeville, too, and they were, they were coming through on my cellphone. I can't tell you that this won't happen again, but we're going to find out why it happened, take whatever action we need to take. But the more complicated these systems become, the more prone there are to the minor thing happening and cascading into, you know, something, something big. We couldn't go to the backup, we couldn't go to the backup because the calls weren't coming in. So the backup wasn't getting the calls either. We had, we had, I had a team over at Gateway Building, I had a team in Burns Road. In fact, I was at the Burns Road location with Cameron, and Tracy and Mike were at the Gates Building, working from there. So we were ready, but if we can't receive the calls, we could have six backups. It's just not going to help us. So I.
When we were on the phone with the state to talk about the next generation 911, we talked about the fact that we have all this great technology, all this great equipment, but if our backbone, which is the phone company, doesn't, they don't have to upgrade. They have not been forced to do the upgrades, so.
Well, I'm hopeful that's going to change, and we did have that call to state. The equipment that's providing our backup right, our backbone right now, which is owned by the host provider.
Sentry.
That's the law. That's Windstream.
Windstream.
The, they're on the equipment that we obsoleted.
Right, right.
Now, we still have a ton of additional capability with what we're doing, but we're still riding on a piece of obsolete equipment that hasn't been replaced by the backbone provider. And of course, there's some additional complication because Windstream's in bankruptcy court right now. You know, there's not been a lot of attention to this equipment. They did get fees on the landlines to upgrade these things over the years, but there's less and less fees, you know, on landlines to upgrade this now, and there hasn't been a lot of, a lot of the necessary changes that we need to see. And we talked to the state about that. We were all there when I discussed with the state that they can buy all of these great things. It's like buying the best car in the world to have no tires to put on it. And they're encouraging all these communities to consolidate PSAPs, to bring in the next generation equipment. I think this, I hate to say this because Matt's going to encourage, but I think the state's got a pretty good plan, okay? But it's going to take years to unfold that plan.
You've got to enforce it, and that's the problem. And, you know, the state really needs to step up and tell these phone companies that, folks, you've got to modernize. We're way beyond copper and everything else these days. You know, and now we've reached a situation where our technology has exceeded what the phone company has, but we have to rely on the phone company to get the calls to us in the first place. And I was concerned about it when you were notifying us in the wee hours of last night. You know, I kept thinking, I wonder if this is related to what happened when there was a failure in Twinsburg. Let me stop and think about it. This is the year 2020, and that a failure in Twinsburg can have an impact on, yeah, ripple impact effect on Lorraine County and its 911 system. That, to me, says there's something clearly wrong. I know this company is struggling and in bankruptcy and trying to avoid bankruptcy, I guess, but the state has really got to step up and require these phone companies to get up to speed because we're, we're putting lives on the line. I can tell you, I was upset last night thinking, you know, I hope somebody doesn't lose a loved one tonight because they can't get the 911 and get the medical attention they need. And then with the storm looming that's coming in, I thought, boy, I hope we get this all resolved before the storm comes in. But this, this lack of upgrade or action by the phone company has got to cease. We've, we've got to have a serious discussion with them, and the state needs to be directly involved because this has to be fixed. We can't continue to jeopardize lives.
I should be clear, I'm not suggesting that their equipment, even though it's very old, was the problem. The problem was with what happened with those calls coming in, that they started rejecting because of some coding problems on them. And I still don't have all my answers.
We still have the Twinsburg issue.
We did, we did. But I'm hoping to have more answers later this morning.
You might want to repeat all the preventative measures and all the precautions and, you know, double backups and different types of generators and all the things that we've put in place to prevent any kind of hiccup like this.
We trenched in a gas line.
Right.
To run a gas generator.
Natural gas, propane.
Natural gas. It'll run on natural gas or propane, because I have experienced in my time here where we've had, when we've had very long snow, snow events, getting diesel out to these generators has been a bit challenging. So I didn't want to just rely on the diesel generator. I also wanted propane, propane, you got me doing that.
Natural gas, sorry.
Natural gas coming in, but the engineers suggested that we just use natural gas backup, and I had to remind them that we had an event in Lorraine County where we didn't have enough pressure in the natural gas lines, and we had to actually evacuate homes and put them in shelters. So I wasn't relying completely on that either. No solution's perfect. Then, of course, you know, having electric from one grid, we've seen, everybody's suffered the frustration of seeing the lights are blocked over on while your lights are out because you're on one grid, they're on another grid. So we made the decision and paid extra to bring in from a distant grid a second feed so that we had at least two, it had to be a huge failure, and it had to be multi-grids that were failing. We also trenched and brought in fiber optics from different locations and riding different infrastructures so in case part of one went down or so forth, we could switch over to the other one. We have backed ourselves up, and we have a double redundancy leg from the secondary PSAP, as the gentleman suggested. We can switch over to that PSAP very quickly, and if you went down to the old 911 right now, you'll see the monitors are up, they're running, they're mirroring what's going on at the primary. So it's just a few minutes to get down there and be up. But when we can't get the calls to come through, it doesn't matter. I'm going to continue to work with this, and I have some answers I need, but I want to make, everybody rest assured that our equipment didn't fail. You know, if, I liken no tires on the car with the obsolete equipment. Well, how about somebody gives you bad gas and the car don't run? You know, you still can't get anywhere, how frustrated you are. And so I got to find out why we got bad gas.
Somebody put a banana on her tailpipe.
Oh, well, I put a banana in the tailpipe. So did I explain that?
How do you know about those?
I saw it on a show.
Yeah. We'd certainly like your contact information, have a follow-up conversation, John. So, yeah, love to do that.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time to be here.
You're welcome. With that, I yield to council. Thank you.
Terminus.
I have no report this morning.
Ooh, good. We're not being sued any, anything new anyways.
Oh, new ones. Commissioners' report.
See, I always said Jerry's got the best job security around. Oh, he's got some legal issues to deal with, so does a great job, too. Just wanted to let everyone know, we continue to work on making sure that folks are responding and reporting when it comes to the census. Remember, April 1 is the big census day where everybody's counted where they are. So we're getting the word out on that. We're having a follow-up meeting with our community chairs. That'll be taking place next Thursday, right? And so, but things are going well. We have a lot of members of the community stepping up and working on these subcommittees. If you'd like to be a part of our complete count initiative in the county, certainly feel free to give us a call here at the county admin building, and we'll get you plugged in in one of the committees. Saturday, enjoyed brunch with a farmer put on by the Farm Bureau at Lorraine County Community College. I've been there in the past. I think this year was just really packed. Wasn't there significantly more people there? Obviously, you know, everything was held at LCC, our great hosts all the time, and of course, they work closely with the Farm Bureau and the farmers in the county as part of the culinary arts program, and it's a great working relationship there. But was very pleased to read some of the priorities of the Lorraine County Farm Bureau for 2019, 2020, obviously, supporting the mission and division of Lorraine County Community College and its activities and partnerships. The Farm Bureau says also that we encourage our membership to participate in recycling programs and the development of agricultural waste recycling programs in Lorraine County. They also indicate telling their Farm Bureau members that the organization supports Lorraine County Commissioners and the continued funding of Lorraine County's Ohio State University Extension and Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation Districts, and we've enjoyed working closely with them on that. And they also say that they support maintaining local detoxification facilities for those with drug and alcohol problems. So just can't say enough good things about the work they do. The Farm Bureau had a chance to work closely with them in Columbus, and they do good work for our agricultural families. Also, eager to hear the report from my colleague who was in Columbus yesterday. She's a big wig down there now with the, one of the executives.
Not been with the governor again.
Exactly, again.
Geez.
With the County Commissioners Association in this very important opioid litigation, which we are engaged in. We're not able to talk a lot about it, but, but I know, trying to work out an arrangement because your leaders in Columbus are notorious for taking your money and keeping your money and not sending it back. And so we need to make sure we launch the initiative to enter into this litigation. We want to make sure that we get our fair share because we've had to absorb a great deal of costs, whether it's at the Sheriff's Department, Drug Enforcement, Prosecutor's Office, Coroner's Office, the list goes on and on, and to be able to help people get back on their feet and put an end to this epidemic that's destroying our families. But unfortunately, our Attorney General was trying to get a big chunk of the change here, and I was glad to see that our Governor, Mike DeWine, put his foot down and said, we just can't do it that way. But there was a big powwow in Columbus yesterday, and they found out they had to deal with Lori Kokoski, so they better get it right.
That's right.
He said that's an apology.
They were shaking, they were all like. Well, I'm not going to start with that. I'm going to start with last Wednesday. Commissioner Sweet and I attended the International Boiler Makers Partnership launch at Lorraine County Community College. The discussion was about the importance and the need of skilled trades in the workplace and how apprenticeships of all the trades prepare people in, for in-demand jobs, and they're actually really good-paying jobs, too. So that was a really nice event. Thursday, we were back at the college to discuss the NORF family foundation's goals for future funding opportunities, and it was well-attended. Had a great diversity in the room to discuss what the needs are in our community and how NORF's funding for programs can help people battling mental health addiction, or mental health illness and addictions. Thursday evening, Commissioner Sweet and I also went to Lorraine Historical Society Carnegie Center, where we addressed the Lorraine Democrats to give them an overview of what we've done over this past year, and they were very receptive to us, and thank you for helping out with that. Saturday morning, we were back at Lorraine County Community College. Actually, Marcia says she was going to get us an office there because we're there so much.
We're there so much.
For the breakfast, as Commissioner Lundey mentioned, brunch with a farmer. And the Farm Bureau has put this on for about eight years, and it's not only a great breakfast, but also by the culinary students at Lorraine County Community College, but it's also, we get to learn a lot about what's happening in agriculture. And the whole farm-to-table thing that they have going on at the college where the culinary students actually go and they plant, and they grow, and they harvest all the produce, and they bring it back and they use that in their dishes. So it's a really great partnership that they have there. And then, as Mr. Lundey said, I went down to Columbus to hear about the settlement options for the opioid litigation, and we're not allowed to talk about the details at this point, but I will say that I'm not real happy about the proposal for the dispersments of the settlements. So hopefully, they listen to some of our concerns about that, and will take that into consideration. We just got a MOU yesterday, so I'm going to forward that on to our prosecutor to give him something to do this week to look that over. And they want to try to come up with something kind of quickly. They, we want to be first at the table as a whole state of Ohio. Instead of everybody going at this separately, we have a better chance of getting a better settlement that way, so.
I was just going to mention, if I could, I was reading The Plain Dealer this morning. My local paper didn't show up this morning. I don't know what happened, but anyhow. So I was looking at The Plain Dealer. They did have a story that had details of how this whole thing was going to break down. So I just want you to know that's already out there in the public.
Is it? Oh, okay. Well, we weren't supposed to, it was by invitation only. We weren't supposed to talk about it, so somebody leaked something out there. But the whole foundation aspect, which I, my thing was, so it's a foundation getting 55 percent, it's the county getting, or the local government's getting 30 percent, and it's the state getting 15 percent. I'm like, okay, so there's two paying clients. It's the state and it's local governments, and, but the lion's share is going to this foundation that isn't even part of a lawsuit, so. But they're kind of, they're making it sound like that 55 percent is local government money, but we have to beg for it and, like, talking about appeals going to the Supreme Court and things like that, like, come on, that's going to take forever, and it's going to turn into a super agency, and I'm not happy about the whole, I mean, foundation getting that much. If they want to put some in, okay, but not the lion's share. So that was, that was my big problem with it, so.
I think we share that.
Yeah.
Yes, that same feeling.
But we do need to put something aside because this problem, even once opioid problem hopefully goes away, there's, this is not going to end. It's going to be something, it's always something. So we need to address that into the future, and that's what the foundation is intended for. And also to, hopefully, if there's any grant money or foundation money that people want to put into that to help people with addiction, that's a place for them to put it, so. End of my report.
Okay.
Thanks for hanging out with me all week.
Well, I do want to back up. I made a visit over to Job and Family Services, and it was nice to see that they're utilizing the space that was renovated. It previously had some leakage by the front windows, and now they've completely filled that in, and they're able to utilize that space. The new call share program through the state has completely eliminated the backup call problems they were facing about maybe six months ago when we visited that program or that situation, so that's been alleviated. But one of the things I noticed in chatting with everyone. But one of the things I noticed in chatting with everyone, we have a lot of employees and staff over there with 21 to 28 years of experience, and I asked if they'd give us another 20, most of them wouldn't commit. So I see a, something coming on the horizon here, we'll have to keep an eye on the fact that our staffing is aging there, we're in good hands with, with experienced folks, but knowing that some of them have 20 to, 21 to 28 years tells us that we're going to be seeing retirements on the horizon. The Boiler Makers, if I could just make a comment on that, it was late last March that I was contacted by Sarah Stang, and Sarah is a cousin to Larry McManaman, who was there to launch this joint venture, he's with the Great Lakes Association of Boiler Makers, the regional director, and she and her husband, who is president of the LaGrange School Board, as well as Dan White, the superintendent, had a discussion out at LaGrange Schools last March, and it was really exciting to see how this came to full fruition, and that the program is partnering with the LCC, they will have a joint venture where those youths who are interested in Boiler Maker trade as a career can also combine that with an associate's degree, so that they are looking at more opportunities than just skilled labor degrees, and I'm not minimizing the skilled labor degree, but in many instances, they're preparing and equipping the students to go on to management opportunities as well as business ownership opportunities, so it's exciting to see that program is actually going to be taking place now, and congratulations to everyone who made that happen. The Nord Family Foundation Lunch, I think a lot of good brainstorming came out of that, and it's always reassuring to see that the Nord family is willing to give back to our community in the way that they do, especially with the limited funding that we're going to be seeing down the road from other sources. The Farm Bureau Breakfast, brunch with a farmer, I've been a member of the Farm Bureau for several years, and I think it's important that our community understands just how much support we need to give back to our farmers. One in eight jobs in Ohio is tied to agriculture, $100 billion of economic activity exists in Ohio because of our farm industry, and last year, because of the wet spring, we had 1.5 million acres in Ohio that never got planted. So it's critical, and it's important to Ohio's economy. The other thing, an interesting statistic, is that Ohio has the lowest farm bankruptcy rate in the nation, and given the fact that farmers are facing such tough economic times, it's interesting to note that Ohio only has 1.2 bankruptcies per 10,000 farms, so our farmers are sustaining and doing well across the board. On Saturday evening, I was in Wellington for the Lorraine County Office on Aging and the Friends of Senior Citizens Southern Lorraine County Carrying Hearts Concert, it was a great, great event. They had local musicians, it moved very quickly, four performances from each of the performers, it was a free event, it was coordinated to raise funds for our seniors in Southern Lorraine County, but sadly, it wasn't extremely well-attended, and so next year, I told them, we'll try to get the word out better, because it was a great event. Monday, we did, I did, with Commissioner Kokoski, we had a great private meeting on a couple of transportation options, I'll be anxious to see if we're able to cultivate that into additional platform and resources for us. And then I just want to remind everyone that Coors Light, until February 21st, is reimbursing anybody who adopts a pet, all you have to do is text COORS4K9 with a photo of the pet you adopted, and they will reimburse you up to $100. So go get a pet.
That's exactly what it costs to get one from our kennel, so.
Exactly.
That's with your license.
So that concludes my report, just a shout-out for 17 on 17 for LCC.
Thank you. They're doing a great job, by the way.
They are.
Four course minutes.
I move the reading be waived.
Second session. Skousky.
Aye.
Sweetie. Aye. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Seeing no other business, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator.
Second. Skousky.
Aye.
Sweetie. Aye. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' general meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.